Good evening and welcome to Selectmen's Meeting for October 3rd, 2022. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Meeting is being conducted live and over Zoom. Our meetings are recorded by our town administrators. Anyone else recording the meeting? Hey, first on the agenda, Dan, do we have any minutes to review?
Woo!
Okay, well, hold your excitement, Craig.
So woo!
Will you have the minutes? How far behind are we? If behind, really, if, I want to say behind, over a month. Are there any over a month at this point? We're pretty current. Okay. We did have a, there was a question about reviewing executive session minutes, and the past policy of the board has always been, review them typically without being explicit on them, if there was nothing, if there was something that a member saw that was fairly explicit, egregious, needed to be changed, we would pass on them until we had an executive session. But the majority of minutes have always been maybe a word correction. Is the board comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so do we have a few to bring forward in the future? We have a few to bring forward. Okay. Maybe four, not the 11. Don, you may be aware of the 11, I think.
Yeah, I'll be aware of that.
Okay. All right, so first on the agenda is Park and Rec.
You need a new computer.
Thanks, Bob. I'm telling you, gotta be. First on the agenda is the Park and Rec Board. Here. Hi, Kerry. Congratulations on the trunk and treat thing you've got coming up on, what is it, 22nd or? Good. Are you ready? Now that's all at the park? Are you getting a guy for the entrance, you think, or anybody going to volunteer, maybe? Maybe one of the reserves? Traffic control, yeah. Cool. Come on up, because the microphones are, they're good, but not that good. Hey, Dan.
Just want to push the button on the.
Push the buttons on the mics, please.
It's like Star Trek.
So Dan and I are here to appoint Suzanne Shuttlerworth to the board. Is what we came to do.
She a volunteer? You coerced her into it. Come on up, yeah, please.
No, Suzanne's been very patient with us, so she's very happy.
What brought about your interest in Park and Rec, if I might ask? Best reason, seriously. No, it's a give-back type thing, your children had a good experience.
Yeah.
How much more we can ask of that. So we have, this was, you mentioned before when we had appointed Kerry, that you would interview two candidates at that time, and you anticipated two vacancies, and so Shuttlerworth was going to be brought forward, you know. We held the best for last, and we understood that, and I appreciate that. In feeling what position?
Brett Passalano's litigation.
And he was expiring, what term? This would be an appointment until just the next election anyhow. So it would just be an appointment until the next election, and she would have to run for the balance, right?
She would be on until the next election, right?
Right.
So she runs again in May.
Exactly. Whoever's up in this year, right? No, only one of you.
No, no.
Only one of you is up. Kerry will be running again because he was a balance, so and then.
Two, one, one, one.
I keep forgetting, I keep thinking you're like, planning board, like you're locking one for five years, and you guys get away with three. Well, again, congratulations on stepping up, and thank you for doing an interview process and coming, you know, with people that came forward.
It's tough right now with people in town, you do find positions for people. A lot, a lot of vacancies, so whenever somebody steps up, I think it's a good thing that the town.
Since after we're done with you all, we have the Senior Center Building Committee. Very fortunate to get, gosh, eight, nine people interested in serving on that. Really trying to pump you up for the next thing, that's what we're saying. You want to sit around and be on the Senior Center Committee after that, just stay in the chair. So, I want to create a motion from one board or the other to appoint you to a term of the Park and Rec Board until next town election in May of 2023. Or something.
No, no data.
Well, we have the data. Great. Do you have any objections to this at this point? Speak now or forever hold your peace. In favor? Okay. Unopposed. Any abstaining? Okay. All right, congratulations. If you want to get sworn in, I think Eve is still here. She usually leaves by nine, so you may want to rush down there. All right. Is there anything we can do to help you guys? I know you have a.
Trick or treat.
You got me on the trunk list, right? I think I told you guys a while ago.
You're on the trunk list. We're looking forward to it.
What's that?
We're looking forward to hearing this.
That's great.
He's representing the whole board, I'll be clear.
Moving forward. For the Park and Rec, I'd like to continue that open for a while. And to do some things. Because I know I've talked to you about Suzanne, everything, and treat, and. Sometimes we don't feel like we've got that back. That we get things, half minutes, and plans. And you're all me, and you have to do that. But we're necessarily, we're standing for laws. We would appreciate letting us know, come with as soon as possible so that we can follow the laws, like it's a policy we want to. But it is difficult. When we're not familiar with them as well as we want to be.
I agree with what you're saying. We're all volunteers, Kerry, we're all giving of our time.
Yeah.
And we all need to work together.
Absolutely.
Just like we're going to work together, you brought a request to our board to possibly explore a rec director for next year. And I know that we've talked on ourselves in a meeting, and I think the last time you were here, there's something we'd like to further explore with you, and work with Bob as well, to see if there's any outside funding. That would be a direction we're talking about taking, that there's this good bilateral communication as well.
Right. We want to do it first with the town. And I did, unfortunately, my family is now involved in that project. That was supposed to be for my daughter's birthday. And we were there, and I went to the city. Because I thought it was going to be two, and I didn't want to say two. And then, and it found out two percent in Alfa, it was tough.
And I think that speaks to the sacrifices that you and other board members make for the town. We certainly appreciate that.
I would love to hear all the feedback.
Good, good. Thank you both for coming here.
Thanks, Kerry, Dan.
Thank you.
Congratulations again. Okay, well. Well, we see Cliff, we see Gary, we see Becky online. You messaged, you emailed everybody, right?
You might.
You should turn your mic on.
So Rita Vale and Dwayne Mosher said that they would be here at 6:15.
You have a couple minutes.
All right.
Maybe they're on their way.
We'll wait for them, and let's, let's have the special town meeting discussion. Okay, so Bob has drafted some motions you have in front of you. At this point, the Selectmen have posted a special town meeting with 11 motions. And the main purpose is to take care of financial matters so that the Board of Assessors and then close down the tax rate for this fiscal year. And we had an approximate amount of $700 and something thousand dollars in certified free cash due to the work of our financial team, left, Dick, et cetera. We have a couple of needs in line items that have shown unanticipated expenses more than we knew back in, I would say, everywhere when you really put the numbers together for the budget. So, you okay? All right.
If I could, just to take some advice from the board. I'll move as good as I used to.
Sorry?
If I could get some advice from the board, see if we have a consensus to switch from raisin and appropriate to transfer from free cash for the money item.
I would say typically, it's always been transfer from unappropriate available funds for anything at a special town meeting, especially that raisin appropriate would also increase the tax levy, if you will, and we have no need for it. And to say, oh, I've got all this money in free cash, but I still won't increase that, really not either of the worst things to do. It wouldn't be the right thing. So, I would say that's correct. Board?
Yeah, I guess. We're looking still, we're waiting for an estimate of the cost for a highway garage security system. And we are consolidating all security systems in all buildings.
Right.
Also, I've set up a clerk position after talking again with the Highway Superintendent. A grade-two administrative clerk, $16.93 per hour, up to 12 hours. The special act, we've been over before, for Officer Gormally. The increased funding for employee benefit number is from our town accountant today, and we have to get a more complete number when the town treasurer returns from vacation.
And I think, I think it might be late.
Yeah.
If we're seeing that number for the retirement, the buyout for the retirement of almost $40,000
Right.
on top of the shortfall.
Right.
Yeah, so, let's not hold that number. The government thing is through Rick Reen Committee?
Government Study Committee, on the 14th of this month, the MMA has a program for Selectmen regarding this kind of information. So I did send it to you late this afternoon.
The FOG?
You want to register for it?
Is that the FOG?
Yes, Law Committee. Emergency Management 5,000. That's mostly because of a one-time cost, we're setting up a Blackboard Connect. Additional funding for law claims, I have it at 50.
I would ask the board to keep that number open at this point. Let's see what the September bills bring us, based on what's happened, and anticipate what's going to happen in October as well.
We have those in the next three weeks.
I would think so, yes. You can certainly ask one, so I think that's a, Article Four and Article Seven are going to be fluid numbers at this point.
Additional funding for health expenses, 2,000. The reimbursement for the Minnetoga Land Trust, 6909. Their project turned out to be $11,000 and change. Where else, let's tell appropriated, 5,000.
What about the, this, the stormwater work they're doing? They have an estimate of that?
Have you heard anything about the stormwater work?
They say they have the stormwater, because they're going to.
No, I haven't.
Pipe in, they're going to put siltation fencing, they're going to.
I have no other information from them, other than the request for this article.
Right.
So does that, I mean, they're doing that for me, but they're already approved money to spruce up that entrance, right? So that might fall under that for funding?
Could be maybe part of the work they were doing. And then they are coming forward, my understanding, I saw an email from Rose to you and myself about a possible CPA.
Yes.
Application in the spring.
For?
Some land.
We know where it is.
Yes, they just. But it is a funding, some current.
The other legal question was whether or not CPA money could be used for this purpose.
For the reimbursement, or for the?
No, no. Propose purchase of additional. So the other two are boilerplate, reducing the tax rate and the money for the general stabilization account.
One thing I thought I passed on to you, Bob, is that motions have to be rewritten, you've got to put in the line numbers for what we're.
For the budgets.
For what we're appropriating to. You know, we're, we're going to transfer from 50,000 dollars for line item, law and claim seven, whatever it is.
You could do that, or we just carry it as a special article.
No, no, for that one, but I mean, other ones like board health expense, you would say the actual line for board health.
That's where you want.
Right.
Just make, leave it special article. And in the books, we just keep it that way, you did not add the budget, just depends on which way you want.
Oh, I know, the good thing about warrant articles, they don't expire.
Exactly.
And then the 11 backwards. We want to reduce the tax rate there again.
No, they're right.
Right.
Because you take so much from tax rate, and then the balance goes.
So that's where we are.
Okay, do we? You know? So was there anybody you don't expect?
Mike, I.
Right. Don Collins? Don Collins?
I don't think I contacted.
Was on the list, yeah. Lyman, yeah.
I did not reach out to him. I don't think I saw my list.
So we have requests from two other residents to be put on the committee if there's space, so John Matthews and Carol Keeney.
Only we have now?
Have we got you invited, or have you appointed?
I've appointed eight.
There was eight, and I thought there was a possibility of one more out there, right? Carol, it was Carol, yeah. So there would have been nine.
Becky said that she thought the ideal committee was seven to nine.
All right, you want to, Becky, if you want to unmute?
Sure. Hi.
Hi.
So you saw a copy of the draft of the mission statement as it was?
Yes.
Bob, do you want to read that, please?
Yeah, this is a draft suggestion for the charge to the committee. Senior Center Building Committee will work with the Senior Center Director and the Board of Selectmen to develop and oversee an expansion project for the Senior Center. The goal is for the Senior Center to have adequate and appropriate capacity to serve hand and seniors for the next 35 to 50 years.
I'll cover you. Any thoughts on that, Becky? Good, Dan?
I think it's right on point with what we need to be doing. I mean, we really need to look at what we have in front of us, the feasibility study that was completed, and, you know, make recommendations, meet with the architects that did that project, and determine costs, and, and if it's a viable project for the town to go forward with at some point.
Can we, can we amend it to say oversee a potential expansion and renovation project for the Senior Center?
A potential, yes. That's agreeable.
Well, that's not a very positive attitude, Don.
I'm in a negative mood tonight.
I see that. All right, that's fine. Don's not coming next week, we can change it back next week.
To the expansion and, expansion for renovation, or expansion and renovation?
And/or.
And/or.
And/or, because, you know, they might just want to renovate a few places and, you know.
Well, technically, the town could turn it down, so it is.
Yeah.
So.
Do we want to put a, do we want to put a timeframe for the board to, for their committee to complete their work?
I think in a conversation with Becky last week, she was saying, what we have here, there's really not a thought that this is going to take forever. You're so far, you've got a great starting point already. This wasn't something you felt this is going to drag on for a year. You're in a let's step up and go mode right now.
Is it realistic we could get it done before spring town meeting?
I think it's realistic that we could be talking, going out for an RFQ for a town meeting, at least, I would think, with what we have developed. Yeah. And then if we had to actually go for funding, it could be in the fall of the special town meeting. I think that's, a year from now, I think it's realistic, we could be going out for funding for a number.
What do you think, Board, Committee?
I, I don't think that it's necessary to put a time limit on it, however, I would not want to vote for the bulk of it in the fall town meeting, because I'm a firm believer that most of our major expenditures should be in the spring. And if the committee does not get finished by, you know, for the, this coming annual town meeting, which would be very aggressive, it's, it's not a problem to, at the next annual town meeting, I mean, I, that's my thought. I think that any major expenditure should be voted at an annual, and I don't think it's necessary to put a time limit on this committee.
Right, well, that's why I was saying, I don't think we need, I think it's realistic, we can get it done, we we just don't need to put it in writing that we get it done. You may come back and say, oh, that everything is falling into place, great, but if it doesn't, do it right.
I kind of disagree with that. I mean, look how long we've kicked along this fire station thing for years. We haven't had a time limit on that, so just keep going to push down the road. Why would we not want to put some type of, hey, let's try to finish this by this time, so we kind of have a goal. We don't have a goal, then it's just going to keep going and push down, and push down, and push down. I think we need to have a goal, goal timeframe.
2024?
That would be the committee's decision, but I think there needs to be a goal.
Maybe that's something we should come back with later.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we have a request to the town minister for two new people, Carol Keeney and John Matthews. How do the board feel about that? Becky, how do you feel about that?
Carol Keeney had expressed interest right in the very beginning, and she was a part of the original building committee project. And I, you know, I think both she and John Matthews would would be great on the committee. But that's for you to decide.
That would bring us up to 10 people. I mean, you had originally said seven to nine. Would you be okay with 10?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I, I just, you know, large committees, as you know, can be slightly overwhelming, and sometimes not as much gets done, just because there's so many people who, you know, meetings can go on and on and on. If there's 20 to 25 people on a committee, it just doesn't. That's my own personal opinion, so. But 10, I think would be fine.
Okay, thank you, Becky.
I have, I have six, Bobby, who I myself, Carol Keeney, John Matthews, and Mike Fedora. Who else?
Gary, Cliff.
Oh.
Don, Don Collins, Lyman Woods. This was at last week's meeting.
Lyman Woods?
Yeah.
Committee that would have to, Amy's sworn in.
Yeah.
Is there a committee, or is it a quasi-committee, you have to post our meeting, we have to make them available in here online? What's important, is it that much of a form?
I would say that there's.
You're going to have to post agendas, because you are being appointed by the Board of Selectmen.
Similar to, and I'll go back to Gary, similar to the police station building committee, which was kind of a formalized committee, you guys were, I think, in charge of a lot of money, or going to be. So I think it's more important to be formal.
Oh, absolutely.
Right. This will be your sixth committee, Cliff, I think, between. At the same time, exactly, yeah. Well, you missed the meeting last week, Rita, we, like, all these people. No, I mean, it was on the agenda. Oh, yeah, it was the committee. You don't watch our meetings on, it's must-see TV, Rita, I can't believe it. Got to keep our views up, come on, please. Oh, okay, so we have two more people. Becky seems fine with them. How's the board feel? Kind of a broad, we're, we're a broad spectrum of people, I like that. Former members, people with some building experience, some professional experience, and, you know, kind of, Dwayne, you're kind of in the middle, you got good building experience, you know, good background in most everything. And we thank you for your service.
Are you appointing three tonight?
No, just two.
As well, potentially.
Yeah, potentially, Carol and John. We have everybody else covered from last week.
What is the light on the board and the chair and the co-chair, or is it a committee by consensus?
I would prefer the committee by consensus. You know, I think you all have to agree on, yeah, just plus, but somebody in charge who may not want to be, no. I think we'll also have, Becky is ex officio, she doesn't want to be a committee per se, but she's got to keep the order then together. Maybe she can be in the clerk. Maybe not. She wants to take budget.
I can post a meeting. I can post meetings.
That'd be great. And then one number of the board, probably ex officio as well.
Do we have a letter of?
I think Bob, you called, you talked to John.
He called today and requested that I take it to the Selectmen.
Okay.
My, my question is, since this is an appointed board, and they're going to be holding discussions and votes, wouldn't it be more beneficial to have an odd number on the board, so there could be an option to carry a vote, so there's no ties?
I will tell you, in my experience, I've seen very few tie votes, in my experience with a 10-member board, it'd be rare if all 10 show up at the meeting. And Dwayne can probably speak to that. We appointed quite a few boards back in the day, and it seemed like there's always somebody missing. Grabbing the non-numbered board, you have more chance even numbers showing up. Bob, what do you think?
I think, I agree. And I think it's, it's good to establish a day and an hour, and then have it regular, so people can plan their lives around it.
Right.
Try and put together, you know, a meeting ad hoc, so.
The good thing is, a sense of the board, we're talking about appointing here, daily meetings, or sorry, afternoon meetings, work pretty well with your schedules, I think, which is good. You know, which is handy, you're not being dragged out at seven or eight at night, because most of you are pretty flexible in your, you know, with your schedule, so. Okay.
So should we motion to approve these in individual status, or as a group?
Last, last week, we did them as a group.
So I'll move to appoint Carol Keeney and John Matthews to the Senior Center, Senior Center Building Committee.
We get the shirts in the, as well. Well, we talked last week about getting shirts.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Put Becky in charge of the shirts. Okay, so Becky, do you want to set up a time, all these people, set up a time that's minimal for everybody to have your first kickoff meeting?
Sure, I can send out an email to everyone and Sure, I can send out an email to everyone and. Establish dates and times and things.
Okay, if you want to reach out to Bob and Pam, they can probably share some of the emails you might not have at this point.
Sure.
Lyman, Carol, whichever it was. Okay, great. Yes.
Thanks for coming.
You didn't get that FedEx, you didn't get that FedEx envelope with your appointments?
Gold, the gold seal and all.
Eva's still here too, I think, if you guys want to get sworn in.
Eva's still here if you want to get sworn in.
So, thank you all. Great. Becky, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Don't, please don't break it. Please don't break it.
All right.
All right, next project updates. I think we finished, is there anything else on special town meeting, the board has assigned motions in the week or something?
Yes.
All right. Project updates. Bob is really throwing on there.
Okay, I have signed and sent off contract to tie and bond. For the capital and accessibility study.
We just want to see if you're going to do, can do the job. We don't want to, they don't want to give you any extensions. We want to see if you can do the job.
You gotta earn that key.
That's right, yeah. Keep the pop for a night, my dog, yeah.
Here's the, uh, here's the issue there. I've also applied. To the State Office of Disabilities for fifty thousand dollars. I have bond contract, as you know, you approved forty-nine and change. And we checked and found that we could pay for that contract with ARPA money. Unfortunately, we're not going to get the timeline for, uh, submission and decisions for. The Office of Disabilities runs into late fall. So we may get a bill from tie and bond, or a, a partial bill. Between now and when, I hope we get some funding from the State Office. So we'll have to juggle some funds there.
Well, we had to do the same thing for the last two, uh, the municipal vulnerability grant and the, uh.
Right.
The casino money.
Right.
Yeah.
Casino one, really.
I've also asked time bond to give us a schedule, which I have not yet received. Fiber optic program, the committee met last week. And I just brought them up to date to where we are. Then I have sent off the. Uh, appropriate materials to Verizon and National Grid. Uh, to enable the project with Whip City to get underway, make ready and so forth. We also had a brief discussion of. Which entity should be constitute the board of directors for the municipal light plant. The choice for the selectmen, whenever you choose to decide, would be to appoint the fiber optic committee as the board. Or to, uh, appoint yourselves as the board. Uh, I don't think it's crucial that you make that decision now. But over the next couple of months, as the activity gets underway, I think we want a board of directors and we want to, want someone to be appointed.
My personal feeling would be a separate board. I mean, I think I'd like to get more people involved and, in other ways, it looks like, my gosh, you guys are running everything.
And, and speaking with the fiber optic committee, they were hoping to taking on more of a role.
And that is also the pattern in other communities, so. My, uh, government study committee, that's an article, uh, for town meeting. Also, October fourteenth, it's sent to the email today. There's an MMA webinar that would like be of interest to the selectmen. It's for selectmen. Highway expansion project. Uh, this is going to come in for a landing, but we have. Few items, I talked with Mark. They have to install the exhaust fan, hook up gas, pave the parking lot. And do the roof drain. And over the next, I have to say, he is not happy. That, uh, there have been so many delays. Some of it, uh, the result of the delays that we're having throughout our economy. But, uh, it is going to happen. We are going to see this project concluded.
I did talk to Mark about that paving thing and I said, you know, wintering over, the paving doesn't happen now is the worst thing in the world. It might actually be a better thing. We'd like to see if there's any, you know, like we do with. Exactly, so, I mean, I wouldn't make that be the holdup. It's not unusual when you let, after you've done some construction.
Uh, lastly, EV charging station, as you know, uh, Becky has said that, uh. They would, uh, be agreeable to putting charging station in the parking lot of the senior center. Uh, I've applied to the state EV IP program for fifty thousand. And the other half of the expense, uh, would come from National Grid. They do without charge the hookup. Exact location, we have to work on that a little bit, but you want to be near the, the, the service. From, from National Grid serves, that's possible, so. But, um, these projects. This is a good amount of money for the project. We might be able to put two units, which would be four ports. And although there's minimal demand now. And looking and checking with other communities, it's beginning to happen, partly because of the price of gasoline. It'll happen a lot more when in fact the car companies can produce more EVs. Right now, they, uh. The, the production is limited. You have to actually place an order. And it takes, took me about three months. Before they can, they make the car. So anyway, this is coming along. I, I don't see that there is any great rush, but sooner or later, there will be a public demand. Uh, for this kind of amenity, and I, you know, I think the town, uh, can provide. And it would then be a decision, once we get the installation, uh, for the town, uh, governing board to decide. How much to charge per kilowatt hour. Some, uh, owners of charging stations. Look to make a major revenue stream. Others say, well, we'll charge plus a modest profit. Over what costs the town to, uh, provide the electricity.
As far as the charging stations going at Senior Center. I've been doing a little bit of research lately on the electricity and electrifying, and I think we need to have the grid check the poles in that area. For transformer capacity. Because if we have four cars charging at the same simultaneously. There's more of a demand on the grid and we have to make sure that, that area with the transformers can handle the draw. And if that's the case, or do we as a town have to pay to upgrade that? Also make sure there's no other costs.
The cost for the hardware is in the twenties. So we'll, we'll have adequate funding.
Could we go back to, um, uh, the fiber optic? There are a couple of details that I'm working on. As you remember with markets, we had to do surveys. We had to pay prior to a survey being done. We had to pay the utility company, so we have to pay National Grid and Verizon. Uh, and we need to get certificate of insurance. So I'm in the process of getting those documents prepared. So we can get them to the appropriate utilities, but that's one other piece that's moving on.
But that's being paid on the grant.
Yes. And I think, did we get one of the bills or was that just an estimate from the grid?
We did get a three hundred dollar bill for the survey that we signed last week.
Yes.
Yes, but I was waiting for information as to whom that needed to be sent, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
We got a lot of stuff here. We got a couple, like a couple of one. Permits. We have Friday, October seventh. From four PM to twelve PM for the VFW. Celebration, that's in red right here in front of me. Celebration alike. And then another one at the VFW, October eighth, from twelve to twelve. For a class reunion. You know, yeah, you know, high school graduation. That's it for the two liquor license. Then, uh, we got two here for Village Food Mart. So one is, um, permit for retail food service. And the other is, oh, that's just one for, so just one for Village Food Mart. Looks like the, uh, the new owners are looking to continue on the license.
That's for the last two months.
Yeah, so from what I was researching today, they're, they're closing on the eleventh. And Finn is scheduled to do a site visit on the eleventh, that day, um, for the health inspection. He, the last time the board health was in there for inspection was in March twenty-fifth of this year. So they're, they've already had their, done this year after the permits were issued. So Finn said he wouldn't go in there until after the sale was completed to, to next year. It's already been scheduled, so.
Would you?
I would say we'd probably want to do a contingency vote, you know, subject to all.
We don't want to hold up their closing.
Right. Yeah, we want to make sure you still provide people, really, you get their groceries.
Yeah, make a motion to, uh, approve this permit subject to all inspections and.
And the last one is a permit to operate a residential kitchen, Farmer Brown Family Fresh and Spudley's Sweets. Now it looks like it's going to go through the end of the year. I don't have any information on this as far as.
All the inspections have been done.
Yes, contingent, uh, on board approval.
On the brown. Oh, Farmer, farm, rip, yeah. Farmer Brown Family, Farm Fresh and Spudley's Sweets. Got that, Sarah?
Second. Second, all favor.
You need to repeat the whole thing.
You gotta repeat.
Second, the family, all the family, Budley Sugar.
It seems like it's going to be a cartoon. Don't you think I like a series? That's it. Thank you, great. I don't think there's any other permitting in there. I don't think it's for you.
We have a concern from a resident about, uh, access in the town hall. And if you're hoping for a response, um, I think that. Bob, is this something you would forward to the accessibility committee to? Appreciate that.
I'm sure when we're, we're addressing the accessibility concerns in this building by having the studies done. So I mean, it's not something we're not looking into, but we're definitely trying to. Do what we can to make sure town hall is improved, accessible and whatever we need, so hopefully that study comes back in a short time and we can. Make the proper adjustments.
Okay, can the board or committee report?
Well, yeah, I've been through all of these items that I've been involved with already, except the one there. The consultant for National Grid's analysis of the town fleet and the possibilities. For electrification and other recommendations. Uh, we, we, we did get that report also. I think it, I originally asked them to come to a selectmen's meeting and make the presentation. And then I said, come to the capital committee. Apparently, they don't operate at nighttime, so. We ended up a daytime meeting, uh, of the staff, but it's a good report, it's worth looking at, and I'll make sure the selectmen have a copy. And that's it.
All right, so what do we want to do about next week's agenda? Don is informing you that Tiger are kicking late. So, break a leg.
A late tee-off time. A charity tournament.
We only meet at ten o'clock then.
The Don Deppport Retirement Fund.
No, no, it's, it's noon time.
That's right over the border, Connecticut.
There's Donna Lyman Orchards.
You got the TPC course.
There's a TPC course.
Wow, I guess you rank. So anyhow, so let's, um, keep the agenda light. Um, following week, I mean, it's a Tuesday anyhow.
Right.
The following week is when I hope to meet with the finance committees. Possibly an exact session. Possible, you know, we're, we're still making sure our, our Ts are crossed.
We got seventeen.
From Kelly that they're very close to coming up with a number for tax rate where we stand.
Week after his town meeting.
All right, anything else to come before the board?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Wow, it's like one continuous, you can't even tell where one begins and the other, oh. Really? Not together, I hope.
I have meetings here.
Oh, I had an open meeting.
Hi.
Hi.